Pendergast is out with an illness. Ken is out of town, as everybody else is accounted for. Please stand with me and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That should be my chair.
You have the sinking chair.
I got the chair today.
Approval of the meeting minutes from December 11th. Only two of us are here that were at the meeting, so we'll postpone that. First public comment. If the public has a comment, please step to the podium, state your name. Ask any questions to the chair. Going once, going twice? No public comment. We have no public hearing tonight. Reports of committees. BCTV, I know BCTV is here.
And she has a report.
Let's see if she comes out.
Good evening. Okay, so, been doing a lot of work over the last year. From January 1st through the end of this year, BCTV produced over 200 videos and public service announcements. Not all of them are up online because the public service announcements I pulled, but basically, that's a lot of videos. And really, it is due to Tammy Cole, and Maureen, and Ralph, and, you know, these people are just fantastic, and that's what's enabled us to do this. BCTV recently purchased an archive module. And what this is, is it allows us to load our videos up to archive.org, which is a site that is accessible by anyone. It's free. You can download videos there. You can watch them without seeing any ads, which is really kind of nice. We kind of like that. And it's Borough Community TV. So archive.org, type in Borough Community TV, and our videos will come up, and you'll be able to access them. So as well as YouTube now, that's another site that people can go to. I just finished a public service announcement for the Community Television Association of Maine, and that's for our PEG Non-Discrimination Bill, which is going through the process right now of becoming a bill. It is basically an informative video that talks about what this bill is, its intent is. It will be distributed to all of the community access stations in the state of Maine who would like to utilize that to help educate people. Let's see. Oh, tomorrow evening, I'll be covering the walk-through at the North Burwick Elementary School. So that's a public information forum for the addition that they want to put on that building. It'll be similar to the one I did over in Lebanon. And then, on the end of this month, I'll be going over to the Huzzy School, which they're going to do a public information forum there. And I'll do the same thing at that building. And then the last stop will be at the middle school, where they will be talking about the Phase 2 construction of what they're going to do at that point. The Alliance for Community Media is going to be on a roadshow. They're coming into Maine on February 22nd. They're going to be up at Portland Media Station. I'm going to go to that in the hopes that I can learn a little bit more about where the FCC is standing. I know that they're planning to file, you know, different things against it, whether it be through legal or through legislature, I'm not sure. We recently did a PSA for Burwick for a Lifetime. I'm not sure how many people saw it, but, boy, it's been really popular. I got to tell you, Ruth Blue and Pat Bover did the ad for Burwick for a Lifetime. They're going to be meeting at the library. And anyone is welcome to come. And it's January 15th at 10:30 a.m. And this has had over 1,500 views at this point, and been shared more than 17 times. So I thought that was kind of neat. Got two celebrities in town. I'm going to have to use them more often, I guess. Coming up this month, like I said, I'm going to do the forums, but I also wanted to let you know that the Table of Plenty is celebrating 25 years. And we will be covering their celebration on January 13th. I'm going to be going over to the Ballroom in Elliott. They're going to be doing something there. And then, of course, just the concerts. Noble Middle School, and the winter band concert, and chorus concerts. Any questions?
Thank you. You've been busy.
Yeah, very busy. Thanks.
Thank you.
In Vision Burwick, we have nobody here from In Vision Burwick. They're having a meeting Thursday night.
Thursday night.
I do know that as a spin-off on the In Vision Burwick, is they're looking at producing a series of summer concerts for out here. They're actually having a meeting tomorrow night in North Burwick, I believe, is where it is. I don't have the details on that, but if you want, I'm sure if you went onto the In Vision Burwick website, you could get that. We have no department reports tonight.
Nope, everybody's working on budgets, so...
We have no appointments, presentations, or other guests?
Nope.
Unfinished business?
None.
There's Town Manager Report.
We got a price. The DEP, I think I told all of you, showed up at our Public Works, and it's time to do something with our fuel tanks that are buried. We finally got a price to replace them, which knocked me off my chair. $92,000. And after I sat back down and just said, "We will plan for that over a five-year period." Every other year, we have to test the tanks. They think they're in probably pretty good shape, but... And then after five years, we'll have, I think we can put enough money aside to replace them.
Is it the, that replace them, put them back in the ground?
We have the option to put them above ground, but we'll have to have a containment surrounding it, or when the hole's open, we can put them back in the ground.
Right.
You know, one or the other. I'd like to keep them in the ground, less visible. You know, and we are upgrading some of the software for calculating who's using what for fuel, and a few other safety things, but nothing too extreme. I got some emails this afternoon from Lebanon and North Burwick. They're trying to schedule another tri-town meeting. They're looking at February, both of these are Thursdays, February 21st and March 7th. If you could be the one, I'm available that night, but let me know which one works best for you, and I'll talk to Ken and Mark. We've been working, meeting with the architects on the fire station. We put out our bids, RFPs, for a construction manager. We got four. We're looking at two of them, who have quite a bit of experience in fire stations, and we're doing interviews Thursday, one at 9:30 and one at 4:30 in the afternoon with the committee. We are also looking at being ready to put the bid out for demolition of the Esterbrook School. It's a little bit more involved, just taking down a building, because all the electrical goes through that building into the police station, which is an issue. And I'm working with Jay and figure out the sewer setup, what it is. It's a big hole in the ground where you can crawl underneath through the basement. I've been talking to Chris. He gave me a really good thorough update today about how the water comes in there. So I think we'll be, once we get all the electrical stuff switched out, we can probably demolish it and leave the water where it is for now. There's one line that comes in from Logan Street. They wind off, and that goes to the police station. So I think when we get a start building, we'll... Chris and I agree that we need to kind of straighten that out and have two separate lines going, one to the fire station and one to the police station that's buried and what have you. We'll make it all part of the renovation. So, and traffic study, we had a meeting about that. And James and I have been looking at trying to find pots of money for sidewalk work, which is what they're working on as well. So I'm looking forward to seeing, they were here, and it's been on BCTV. You can see their preliminary public hearing. I'm anxious for them to get back to see where we are as they move forward, but it seems like they're going to be very thorough. What else? That's all I have. We're working on budgets. Bond application will go out this week for the fire station. I finished that. And budgets are, we sit down with the Finance Director and Deputy Finance Director this week to review it. And then, as usual, department heads have done a good job putting it all together. Their want lists aren't too deep. So I warned them ahead of time that I wanted money for roads this year, so keep the capital stuff down, which they've done. So we'll see. The encouraging thing is that revenue sharing is going to be back at 5%. And that's a big...
Huge benefit.
Huge benefit for us.
It's been at 2%.
Yeah, it's been at 2% since...
Two and a half.
Two percent.
Two and a half.
Yeah. Well, I think Lepage dropped it back down to two.
Yeah, he did.
So...
He dropped down to two, too?
2% and with the promise that it would go back up this year to 5%.
I figured he planned on doing away with it.
Yeah. Well, he would have liked to, I think, but... So that's encouraging. That puts us in a much better position. We also had a good undesignated fund balance on assigned fund. So using the policy that you have in place, we'll have a little bit of extra money that we didn't have last year to use for capital projects. Hopefully, going to use that all for roads. So, but, a bit encouraging, but we'll see how everything plays out. But that's where we are.
I just want to talk a little bit more about the fire station. Is we had Sebagu Technics up there doing some wetlands delineation. There was some concern about, you know, putting the new roadway out to Sullivan Street through there, but as they found out that there's one minor stream crossing, and there's no real problems with putting a road through there. So that's good news, so that we'll be able to get, you know, access in and out. And Port City Architect is finalizing a plan right now. The, might be a few minor adjustments to the preliminary design to make it fit on the site better, but, you know, basically, it's going to be the same building, though just maybe reconfigured a little bit.
Yeah. And Public Works did some test site digging over by the Esterbrook School. They didn't get all the way to the foundation, but they got fairly far in, and they have not hit any. They've done, I think, five different spaces.
No ledge?
No ledge yet. So we're assuming and considering that the water pipe in there's a basement there, I think that we'll be probably in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Yeah, because, Chris, you said the water line is, and that foundation was more than four feet deep?
Yes. If you go down beneath the police department, you can see into a crawl space that's underneath the covered walkway that connects the two buildings. And that's like four feet high, and the water line goes through there. After that, my best memory is that the line goes outside the foundation and around...
We can't hear you. It's like blank air. You've got to come up to the podium here.
Hi, Chris Wiseman here. Yeah, the, yeah, the water line goes under the covered walkway, out, just lying on dirt there. And then, I believe, will go out around the old school building and intercept the original line that came into the vacant school building and went through it to the police department. So, right now, the vacant building has no water and no connection that I'm aware of. It was sort of a solution that wasn't the perfect solution, but it was pretty easy to get the line into the police department and forget about the vacant building there years ago. So...
We should be in good shape.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Selectment's Communications. Another one from Xfinity Comcast. It's the only one that I ever get every meeting. Is writing to inform us that...
Good news.
They are no longer going to distribute, have distribution of MGN, HD, and Impact TV effective January 1st.
I don't even know what that is.
Whatever they are.
They use Sams?
No idea. Wait a minute. Big, long one.
Yeah, from Senator Collins.
Is Senator Susan Collins. Is, she's honored to represent Maine. Is she's Chairman of the Senate Aging Committee. That's a good thing for Burwick's aging. She's also Chairman of the Transportation Appropriations Subcommittee. Looking at rebuilding the infrastructure. As she talks about the farm bill and a lot of other things, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. But, is Burwick for the Community Agent and Transportation. Those are two things that Burwick's looking at.
Yeah, exactly.
I guess we'll be talking to her. That brings us to accounts payable. We got a bunch of them. Account payable warrant 1924 from December 13th, 2018. The amount is $66,650.80. Water warrant 0924 from December 13th for the amount of $7,318.12. Payroll warrant 1924 from December 13th for the amount of $48,116.90. Water warrant 0925 from December 20th, 2018 for the amount of $487.04. We like those. Is account payable warrant 1926 from December 27th, 2018 for the amount of $127,817.17. Water warrant 0926 from December 27th for the amount of $1,883.33. Payroll warrant 1926 from December 27th for the amount of $55,952.84. Account payable warrant 1927 from January 3rd, 2019 for the amount of $784,647.80. Payroll warrant 1927 from January 3rd, 2019 for the amount of $54,429.30. And a payroll warrant for January 10th, 2019. A payroll warrant 1928 for the amount of $57,174.83. Make a motion that we pay our bills.
Second your motion.
Any discussion? Hold those in favor? Thank you. All right. New business. Is the first item on here is Jessica Fenstrer?
Fenstrer.
Fenstrer?
I can address that. She's not here, but she asked to be put on the agenda. She lives on the discontinued road, Route 4, right where it takes the bend, if you were just going straight. We, it's a public right-of-way. We have discontinued its maintenance years ago. I'm not sure exactly when, but... And she was on the assumption, she's new, she bought property there, that wondered why we weren't plowing it. She thought it was a town road. I told her, "It is a town road, but we do not maintain it anymore." She wanted to talk to the board about putting it back to our maintenance. I said, "You should have to address the Board of Selectmen and their request, and that would have to go before the public if the board recommended it." But we've never maintained it since Robert's been here, from what I understand, so...
So this is Old Route 4?
Old Route 4.
Old Route 4. Now, this is...
The one that used to go, bend and go up over the railroad track?
Right, right. Down, down in the...
Right where the bend is, where you come out, Mark's business.
Oh, at the other end. Down by where the, down by where the medicinal marijuana place is now. Oh, okay.
I'm not sure if she's one of them, but...
Did we ever maintain it?
No.
We never have ever maintained that road?
Well, not, not for years and years and years.
Yeah, I don't remember it ever...
Did she purchase this place when?
Huh?
When did she purchase this?
I'm not sure exactly. Recently.
I was trying to think what place it was, but I've not...
It's the first house on the right. I think she has a salon there and a few other things. But what, if, I just give heads up, we've got a few roads like that in Burwick.
Well, Love Brook.
Yeah, Love Brook is one.
That's what I thought you were talking about when I first saw this.
Dumont, where Lisa lives up in that...
Durant.
Durant.
Yeah.
So, it's just...
I would think that information would have been conveyed to the purchaser at the time.
Right, the Realtor.
Should have been on the deeds of...
On the...
Purchase and sales.
Yeah.
There should have been a disclosure, I would think.
Disclosure, that's the word I was looking for.
Yeah, because when I purchased on Dobson, at the time, it was in a town road. So, they disclosed that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like we talked before, we have a lot of subdivisions being built, and we really need to address how we want to manage these roads. Because the more roads we add, the more work is going to be for us, and the more expense is going to be for us. And we don't have the manpower to do a lot of it. Plus, we need to take care of the roads we have already, which is what we're addressing in the next, you know, four years, five years. So, maybe longer. But, so it's real tough to want to take on more roads.
Right.
And I don't think, we've been looking through the ordinances, and I don't think we have an ordinance saying that we will do that when somebody puts a subdivision, but we have a standard that they have to maintain if they want us to do that. They still have to come before the board to ask.
Right. Is they have to come before the board and have it put on the warrant, and then the town votes on it.
Yeah.
Is the way it has been in the past.
Yeah.
And, I, you know, I'm with you. I'm getting to the point now where we have more roads than we can handle now.
Yep.
If they'll be putting in new developments especially, you know, it's going to be up to the developer and any homeowners association, you know, to figure out what they're going to do. Is this one here, if it's down where I think it is, is, you know, there used to be a contractor that lived down in there, and he had a mini race car thing down, a racetrack down in there, if that's where I think it is. But, is I don't believe that that road's been brought up to any kind of standard.
Yeah.
You know, that we...
What happens is when those roads go in and they go to a dead end, it makes it really difficult for the pile trucks to turn around. It makes it even more difficult for fire trucks to get in there and turn around, even if it is built to specs. The Town of Gorham has put in an ordinance saying that if they adopt any run, roads, it has to, it has to be in and out onto another road. It cannot be a dead-end road.
Right.
For those reasons.
I know that with, with Burwick, they've gone back and forth with those dead ends from doing a circle or a hammerhead, a T. And it keeps going back and forth, you know, because nobody likes either one of them.
Yeah. Well, it's like Heritage, where Mr. Clement is building. His road eventually is going to come out on the Cranberry Meadow Road, or I think...
Yeah, they're supposed to connect eventually.
That would make sense that we continue to extend that.
Right.
So we can get in and out from either direction, so... But some of these, like a Worcester Street one off there, is going to be very difficult.
Yeah. I, you know, I don't want to take any action on it right now, but I want to go down there and look at it and get a better idea. But, is I believe that, you know, it's, there's no, no, it hasn't met any standards as far as, you know, town roads, as far as I know of, is, so...
But I'll, she'll probably, I'll give her a buzz tomorrow or at the end of the week and see if she wants to be back on the agenda for your next meeting.
Perhaps we need to put that as a topic of discussion on a future meeting concerning...
Roads.
Roads.
Yeah. We could probably do it in a workshop. It'd probably be right after a short meeting.
Yep.
So we can discuss that and a road, a capital road plan.
Right.
So, okay, I'll do that.
That brings us to Mr. Andy Buckman.
Thank you for allowing me some time tonight.
Hey, we didn't have anything better to do.
Well, that's good, because I might be a little long-winded tonight. I'd like to start with a bit of history of the town in order to present this to you. Back in 1976, and a lot of you probably weren't even in town this time, and maybe some of you weren't even here, you know? But the only one that I can speak for is Eleanor and myself, because we both were here. So, other than that, Tom was here, too. So, what happened in 1976 was that we had a bicentennial. And we had members of the Legion, which were also on the bicentennial committee. And at that time, the bicentennial committee asked Babe Plant, which some of you knew, because he just passed away within the last, you know, seven or eight years. But Babe was commissioned by the committee to the sign that we had, the Maine sign, the Town of Burwick sign, that was on the front lawn. Just recently, we, you know, discovered a little more information on it, that it was done during the time the wagon train came through. Some of you probably don't even know about that. And we had a big, a big to-do during this bicentennial. And he was commissioned by this committee. Now, to my knowledge, there was a couple from the Fire Department at that time were members of that committee also, and a couple members from the town. Now, I don't know who they were. I couldn't get, I couldn't dig that information up, except I knew that Babe was, because he was also a Legion member. So anyways, to cut it a little bit short, is that he made that sign, and when you go in to vote, you see the bell that's up on the stage. He also was commissioned to do that. So we have been maintaining it to the best that we can, and the Plant family has been involved with it also. Matter of fact, the last time that we had it refurbished and repainted, it was paid for by the Plant family. Particularly Janet Plant, well, it's not Plant now, but Janet, she was the one that was involved in her sisters. So now it's time to replace that sign, because it has rotted, so that you can stick your finger to it. And the post is also rotted out. I've done my due diligence. I have gone around to several different sign painters. But I ended up going to the one that made our sign up at the Veterans Park. He has given us the best price. And I think when I was originally talking with Steve, I had thought it was a little high, and I thought that I was going to call him again today to find out exactly where we stand on this. Well, come to find out that he has given us a price about half of what that we originally thought it was going to be. You know, so I had interpreted it that it was going to be $6,000 to replace that and the post and everything. Well, I either wasn't hearing well, or didn't have my hair in it on, one or the other, because it ended up being $3,000.
Oh, okay. Wow.
So the total cost of replacing the sign and the post is going to be $3,000. My effort here tonight, because as you probably all well know, is for the town to pay for it. We will, anything that runs over, any other costs that come up, like getting the holes done and contacting DigSafe, Robert, our manager at the Town Barn, has agreed to help where he can. We will take down the post, and the Legion will take down the post and prepare the land, you know, for the post to go back in. Recommendation from the, from... Recommendation from the, from the sign maker was to eliminate the single post, because it's really not. This one was, I can't say anything about this one, that's in there now, but with the materials you get today, and we're going to be doing this with all compost, con, yeah.
Compost.
Get it out. Anyways, all materials that will not rot. And the painting is going to be done, in a painting and sealed. So, the estimated time before it will ever even have to be repainted again is between 30 and 40 years. And I will not be here to see it. So, I, I hope that the town can see it well clear, you know, to do this. But if not, the Legion is willing to step up and do whatever part that we have to do, because we feel, because of historical value of this sign, that it belongs there. You know, and with the efforts of our forefathers and the, and the people that were living here in this town, all of this was put together. And we were very fortunate, because at the time, Mr. Plant decided that he did not want any money. He wouldn't even take money from the Legion for the materials. He decided that he was going to do this for the town, so that they would have this. And, and also that's when he decided to do the Liberty Bell at the same time. And both those projects. Now, we also have an ongoing project to fix the Liberty Bell, but that is going to be done by the American Legion. We're going to replace some of the wood that has broken on it, repaint it, and we're going to put a big set of casters on the bottom, so that it's easier.
So you can move it.
Well, you know, we've had a lot of complaints about having it moved, you know, having to move it.
I've moved it, I know.
The big thing, and I really don't want to bring this up, but it's the stage floor. It's not the casters, because that stage floor is so uneven. I don't know how, you know, and they got one part in that floor that I don't know if, if you're even aware of, that is lifted, and it's kind of like a little hollow in there. And I know that now that the, they have a group up there that's doing plays, I would think I would investigate that a little further and see what can be done about that, because, again, I look at it as a liability. I mean, you know, there's, you'd have to have a flooring person come down to take that section out, put another section in.
We've had a flooring guy looking in the, the floor in the auditorium, so maybe we just have him take a peek at that too.
Yeah. Well, you know, again, at, at the time, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't very important, but now that they're renting it out and, and everything, I think that it might be a moot point to check into it. I don't know if, you know, I don't know if it's anything that, you know, we, we used to have some good carpenters that was in our, in our post, and we used to do a lot of the stuff that we could. But at this time, we're either too old or too lazy. You know, so.
I wouldn't say lazy, preoccupied.
Preoccupied, yes, yes. Well, those of you that know me know that I'm all over the town anyways, because besides the American Legion, the town is my main project. You know, I do whatever I can when I can.
Know that.
And, so this is why I'm here tonight. And I'd like to propose a motion that, you know, that if, if you can see it well, way clear, for the $3,000, we would certainly appreciate it. If not, we're still going to do the sign.
Money out of the undesignated surplus, contingency?
Let me look in the town operating budget first before we go there, but if I don't have it there, we can take it from the contingency. I'm waiting for my monthly report to see budget numbers, so. I'll have it this week, but either one is fine.
I'll make a motion that the town, you know, expend $3,000. You said there may be, you know, some other costs there, or?
There might be, but if there is, the Legion will handle it. Anything, anything past that.
I'll make a motion that the town expend up to $3,000 for the new sign for the front of the town hall, to be taken from either contingency or undesignated surplus.
Yeah, we, we probably have it in, I'll look in the building budget first.
Yep.
If not, we'll take it from contingency, we got plenty, we got a good balance in there.
I'll second that motion.
That's where it belongs anyway.
Right.
You know, because it's really a landmark, frankly.
If, I tried to find, we had, one time we had a collage, and I don't know whatever happened to it again, this was, of all the people in town at that time that had their picture taken there. And during the celebration, you know, because it was in before the celebration started. And, I mean, this was, I mean, it was, you had to be there, you know, to see it. Eleanor was marching with her Girl Scout troop at the time, so I know Eleanor was there. You know, so, I mean, we were, we were doing, you know.
That was a year out of high school, but I was in the background.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I'd like to make a comment that I'm, as a citizen of the town, I'm very pleased with the progress that the town is making on, on all the projects. The Riverfront Project, for example, I mean, that's coming along, I know they're slow, but you know, you know, you got to stop and realize this stuff doesn't happen overnight. But the Legion, speaking for myself and the Legion members, we're all glad to be a part of the town.
We're glad to have you.
Yep. And speaking of which, I have one, one little brief.
Wait a minute, before you go on. Can we vote on the motion, so you get your money?
Oh, I would appreciate that.
You have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Yeah.
Thank you. We are also doing the Citizen of the Year now. And we have the certificates that are out to be made out for, you know, anybody that you have. We would love the input from the board, and from the town manager and town clerk, anybody that we can get, you know, from. Right now, I am pleased to say that we are well on our way. Things are looking very good. And I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it's going to be in May. It's going to be taking place in May. And I got great news today that we have another Eagle Scout, which will be getting his presentation during our citizenship. So, we did four Eagle Scouts this year already, and, or last year, 2018, and now we've got our first one for 2019, all from Troop 313. So, you know, it's a troop that we sponsor, the Legion sponsors it. You know, we're one of the, and we're, we have a couple of Legion members that are part of the troop. And I just signed up the Assistant Scout Master to become a member of our post. So, we're doing, you know, we're doing what we can, and we would like all the input that we can get. And anybody who is listening online, I do believe that Patty, you have some of these applications at the, at the town office, so if anybody wants to stop by and pick them up, you know, they, they have them there that are available. So, with that, I want to thank you gentlemen, and.
And ladies.
And ladies, these, hey. This throws me, you know? We Too Movement, I mean, we're, we're involved with it, right? Yeah, but thank you very much, and I, I think I've already, I don't know if I mentioned this to you already, but this is going to be the new poster for the car show.
June 2nd, it looks like, right?
Yep, it's going to be June 2nd, rain date, it's going to be the 9th. And, like I said, I don't know if I showed you this, it's also 100th anniversary of the American Legion. At the same time. So, and we're going to have t-shirts made up for, for that, which celebrate both 100th anniversary of Legion and the car show.
Wow.
So.
And this one's going to be bigger than ever.
Well.
It grows every year, doesn't it?
It does, last year we ended up with 130 cars.
Wow.
And every year it has gotten bigger. I can remember the first year we did it was on the 300th anniversary. We had 60 cars, and I was thrilled, you know? And then every year it has grown by leaps and bounds, you know? So it's been, it's been one of those, one of those town projects that we do that really brings out, I, I think last year, somebody tried to estimate last year, but we, we did it with how many burgers we sold. Well, we sold, we sold over 300 burgers, you know, with 300 hot dogs, plus chili and everything that went with it. So, we figured we either had a lot of hungry people there, or we had a lot of people there. But every year, every year it gets better, and every year we're pleased to do it. So, and it's like all the projects that the Legion does for the town. You know, we're glad that we can do them. We're glad that we're still healthy enough to do them, especially myself. So, again, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to 30-day foreclosure notices.
This is the 2017 taxes. We had 30 residents that, properties that are behind on their taxes. It's, this is a 30-day notice for foreclosure. They went out last week. Most of these folks have a payment arrangement they made with Maureen. Some are behind in payments, others just have ignored it. So this hopefully will be a wake-up call, and they'll come in and pay their taxes for that year. We don't want your property, we want you to pay your taxes, so.
And that brings us to Chris Wiseman, the Water Department.
Hi, Chris Wiseman, Department Head of the Water Department. And I asked for this time here tonight just to, because we were getting quite a few answers about the notice we sent out with the bills at the beginning of January. And it would have been fun if there were more people here to ask questions, but just first give a little background. Every day, the operators at the Water Department make choices that limit the amount of disinfection byproducts we produce. And we've been doing this since, almost since the plant was built, 19 years ago. The law didn't apply to us then, but we still were checking on it, and when the law applied, we started investing time and resources in producing the lowest amount possible. And the problem was, we imagine, well, under control as we came up to the test that we took this October. And that was so amazingly higher than we expected, that I made a couple of decisions, and the first one is that we're only required to let the public know within 30 days when a disinfection byproducts number is exceeded. That's because there's an extraordinarily low health risk. Many things that could happen, we would have to notify the public within 24 hours, such as E. coli in the water, or a waterborne disease, or a very high nitrate level. But this, we have 30 days to notify people because the risk is so small. But people all objected to it, we had like five calls at the water plant, and they said, "How am I finding out this months later?" And I explained that to them, and I'll just pass it on to you. When we take the test, we may not see the results for a month after that. And then, we send the results, well, the results are automatically sent to the main drinking water program, and they will notify us of the violation. Once they notify us, then we have 30 days to tell the public about it. And we are required to actually send a letter to every individual customer. But, in the future, I've decided that we will be notifying the customers as soon as possible about any health-related water issues, such as this one. And in order to make that possible, we're going to be making a active and continuing effort to collect the email addresses of the customers, so that we can have a way of notifying them, even if they'll get a letter in 30 days after that. But that's my first decision, that we're going to avoid that problem, because people were understandably concerned, because it says, "Well, you might get cancer from this." And that's very valid. We had to use a specific form provided that had limited space to explain everything. But there's lots more to say, and I'm happy to answer any questions. But the big fact that I can't forget is that I don't go out worrying about being struck by lightning every day, and that's about how worried I am about disinfection byproducts in the water. The rule is this, if you drink over two quarts, if you drink two liters of this water every single day of your entire life, 80 years, then you will have a one in 1 million chance of getting a health effect. It's just so small that it's not even worth thinking about. However, it's a rule, and we don't want to have any of them in the water. But it's difficult to keep them out. I can go into the science at great depth, but basically, when we add chlorine to the water, and there's organic matter in the water, the river is full of that organic matter. When any of that gets through the filter, which it does constantly, in small amounts, it combines with the chlorine to form compounds which are carcinogenic, in this case for the haloacetic acids. The second thing we're going to do at the Water Department, and I'll be talking to the town manager about my budget tomorrow, is we're going to solve this problem. Rather than keep doing what we can, spending as little money as possible to keep it below the limit, we're going to make sure we never exceed it again unless something extraordinary happens. We believe we understand why the test was so high. We believe that the water is completely safe now, but the test hasn't come back that we took, it hasn't been a month yet. And it will cost some money, I don't know how much. But one of the thing, well, I don't know, who knows? I've been talking to the engineers, and they threw together an estimate that looked like, well, maybe $500,000, something like that. But it may be a lot less, or it could be twice that.
Wow.
It's a difficult problem that occurs with source wa, with surface water. It's not a problem with most wells, but that's the fact of the matter there. It may very well be that without doing anything, we will not exceed the limit in the future. But we will be close to it always, unless we do something, and that's what we're going to do. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or explain anything further.
How often do you perform these, this particular sample?
It's a quarterly requirement.
That's every, every three months, okay?
Yeah. The drinking water program had us, years ago, study all the tests we'd taken and find the very worst single day of the year, which was the 18th of July, it turned out to be. And that, we had to have a test there, and then three months after that to fill in the rest of the year. And that's the way it works for all water utilities in the country who have surface water.
So can I ask you, Chris, from October 1st to December 31st of 2018, how was this sample collected, and at which point, in between those three months? Was it one specific day that it was collected? Was it collected every day and averaged out over?
and averaged out over a period of those three months, or?
Good, good question. The test costs about $220. So, we do it four times a year. So, we took that test, we saw the results, and we had a violation. And we notified the customers with the next billing to save money, maybe $500 or so in postage and labor. And.
So, I guess my question is, did you take one sample for that three-month period?
Yes.
And did you do that at the beginning of the month, or beginning of October, or did you do it in December? Did you do it in November?
There is a specific day that we must take it. Well, you can go day or two either side if necessary. And that was October the 18th. That's when we took the sample. We had no reason to expect that there was any reason to take another sample for about a month after that until we got the results. And.
So, these results are based on one sample that was taken on one day in a three-month period? And did you have any other samples in between the other three quarters that were outside of the maximum limits?
It varies. The typically, the lowest sample is the one that we'll take this month on the 18th. And it increases in the summer, either the July or the October one is highest.
How were the first two of the year? How were the first two of the year?
So, from January to March, was that within normal limits? And from April to June, were those within normal limits?
Right.
I forget. Here's how the violation works. You take one every quarter, and they average four quarters going into the past. So, the one you take, took, plus the three previous ones. It's a running annual average.
It's an average of all four quarters?
Yes, and that determines the violation. So.
So, did we have a violation in the first or second quarter? I'm assuming no.
I'd have to check it. The, the average was, the maximum is 60, and the average, I believe, was around 50. So, this single test was enough to overcome lower ones in all the other quarters, though they might have been up near the limit too.
Well, if July was off, and there was a violation in July, couldn't this quarter be impacted by July's numbers if you're taking a running average of the four?
That's right.
The water may be fine, but it may be skewed because of a violation the previous quarter. That's what you're saying?
Yes, and that brings up a good point, that the odds are very good that we will have a violation as soon as we take the next test, no matter what it gives us, because the test three months ago was so incredibly high that it will mean that we fail this quarter and the next one, and maybe the one after that, even if we get as good a result as we've ever gotten.
Can they provide us with the running average and then the actual results per quarter so that you can see if it is a runoff and that you'd expect to see it? So, you can forecast and say, "Okay, I know the first quarter of 2019, it's still going to be a violation, but it, the water's fine. It's just impactful from July."
I, I have those records, and I could provide them to you. The, I'm not sure. Whatever it turns out to be, you average it, and that's the result. You, the figures we are generating in the past year are not very low. They're below the limit, but not far below it.
So, it runs a small margin.
According to some engineers I know from right here, Chris has worked with them before, they told me that this is an ongoing issue throughout the state with surface water. There, we're always fighting to keep that disinfectant byproduct below standards. And you just have to continue to work on that, you know.
I looked at some past records in the Summersworth Water Department. Back a few years ago, they produced a expensive new enhancement in their plant, which works great. They're still producing significant disinfection byproducts, and that was the whole point of the upgrade.
And I'm sure most of that is seasonal with fall and all the organic matter, which I understand. It just, plus there's variability. I'm not sure how samples are taken. It's the same specific way every single time, by the same person. Obviously, there's variability in, in sampling procedures and things of that nature, how they're collected. So, I don't know if, you know, but if it's a statewide issue, obviously, it's, it's a statewide issue. But the question is, is how are we going to, to correct it? And I think you have a plan in place, but obviously, residents of the town need to have confidence in knowing that they're not at risk and, and that their water is safe to drink. Obviously, we, we have had issues with the manganese and things of that nature. So, I'm sure that, again, the public is more sensitive and aware of any particular issue with their water to date because of those previous issues. So, I think the best thing we can do is, is, or you, or whoever, do the best we can to educate the users.
That's part of my plan, to spend more time communicating with the users. It's, it takes a lot of time to write things that are helpful to people. But we intend to do that so that they understand what's going on.
When were these values established, you know? Because much like, you know, for OSHA standards, our, our values are from the 70s, from data collected in the 50s and 60s. We know today that those values are not stringent enough to protect the worker. I don't know if that's the same case with water sampling, if those standards were set in place with the same type of data that was collected from decades ago. I have no idea. You know, I'm not familiar with the water testing.
We do sample the water every single month.
Well, I was talking about the concentration, maximum concentration levels. I'm not sure when that was established. Yeah, so, but from my perspective, just being, coming from a safety and OSHA background, I know that OSHA regulations are not stringent enough to protect the worker. So, we have, we have data out there that shows that we need to use different values which are more stringent because all the previous data that we know is insufficient in protecting the worker. So, like I said, I don't know if that's the same case with, with these water standards or not. I'm not sure. I have no idea. But they were put in place for a reason either way. And, and so if they're elevated, they're elevated, you know. So, we need to do best we can to mitigate it in any way we can.
There are some interesting possibilities that we'll be looking at right away this month. We did a study back in July of this summer specifically on disinfection byproducts in the plant, which we took 18 samples in the plant over several days following one block of water as it went through the plant. And we found out that it was absolutely true that having the water sit in the plant overnight for about 16 hours, not moving, increased the disinfection byproduct significantly. And.
There's greater contact time, that's why.
That's right, yep. So, that's one of the possibilities, is to re-engineer how the plant runs so that it runs continually. And it's, there are some difficult things to deal with there, but that would drop the results considerably overnight.
Well, either way, I, I have faith in you and, and the department. I just think we need to do our best to educate the public and make sure that they know that we have a pulse on what is happening. Obviously, this is a snapshot as well. We're talking about four samples throughout an entire year.
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not sure how that averages out, or how, how the data is, or calculated, but it doesn't matter, as long as we let people know everything we possibly can about the situation, much in the same way we did with the manganese. So, I think that would give them trust in us.
That's, that's part of the plan. We'll notify them right away of anything in the future. We're going to give them a lot more information regularly and plan to make it almost impossible, a little to happen again.
But nothing's impossible.
Yeah.
So, as long as we do our best at whatever.
Chris and I had talked about this before, and we have a budget meeting coming up this week, Thursday. So, we, I've asked, we sit down, look at what, what's the methodology we need to get in place to make this happen.
Right. And I'll do more to try to understand how this information is collected and calculated, so. And if you could provide that information, that would be great.
So, sort of the big picture of this rule and its requirements. Okay? We can do that.
Very good.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. We have no quitclaim deeds. We have no abatements and supplementals. Second public comment? Welcome back, Eleanor.
Nice.
We've missed you.
Chris, I'd like to, I'd like to say I did, I picked up my water bills, and then someone came in the post office and asked me if I'd read the letter. And I said, "No, I just got my bills." I get two. So, I opened it up. And I'll be honest, she asked, she said to me, "What does that, what's the word? The acid, what does that mean?" And I said, "I don't have a clue." But I found out what it does mean. I, you know, I said, "But I'll..." But she called up there, and she did not talk to you. She talked to the woman, and she was very unhappy with what she was told. All she was told was, "Don't worry about it. You'll have to drink a lot to get cancer." Well, that, that is not the answer that she wanted, and I don't blame her. She wanted an explanation, and she didn't get it. So, I said, "If you want to get any complaints, call the post office. There's always somebody there."
Why do you think I avoid it?
Thank you.
But that is one you should be able to explain to them a little better. And, and even in the letter, because even when I read the letter, I would, you know, and I.
She doesn't tell you anything.
No, it didn't tell you anything. And if you didn't know what it was. But I did, I happened to know somebody with wa, about water, and they explained to me that it was chlorine. So, that's how I found out about it. But I had not a clue when I read it.
Yeah, we should have put more information in a separate letter.
I think that's the only thing.
You know where to get me if you need. We have no executive session?
Nope.
Other business, non-agenda items. I, I wanted, I meant to ask you, I understand the fire department was busy all night long across the river?
Yes, I haven't had a chance to sit down with Dennis. Dislocated his shoulder. Shoulder, so he's not quite as frequent being in the building, but.
He didn't do that on the job. He did that on his own time.
He did that at home.
Our OSHA 300 log was looking pretty good last year.
No, I'm sure they were very busy.
All I know is every time, every time I saw any clips on TV of the fire across the river is Berwick's ladder truck was prominently displayed.
Yeah, I'm sure we were there.
Well, I didn't know anything about it. Today, someone called me, and I must have swept through the whole thing.
I think that's a Chimbor.
It is.
I believe it is, yes.
He just purchased a building in Westbrook.
Is one other thing, is I just want to mention that the Winter's Farmers Market is this Sunday. Is come on down and enjoy some fresh foods. That's all I have. Anything else?
No.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.